Welcome to the Barnstable School Committee Meeting for June 19, 2023. I'll start off at 1.1 District Vision and Core Values. District Vision: The Barnstable Public Schools educates the whole child by creating a student-centered school culture that addresses students' physical, social, emotional, and academic needs by creating a safe and healthy learning environment in which students are challenged, supported, and engaged. Core Values: In Barnstable Public Schools, we value commitment, collaboration, and community. Commitment: We are dedicated to the continuous learning and growth for all. Collaboration: We work together while keeping students' needs at the center of all decision-making community. We build strong, respectful partnerships that support student success. 1.2 Statement by the Chair Video or Audio Recording of the Meeting. I remind everyone that this meeting is being recorded and will be broadcast on Channel 18. I also remind any member of the public who wishes to make an audio or video recording of the open session of this meeting to first notify me as the chair, and I will then inform the public of the recording as required by the open meeting law. Seeing nobody, moving on to 2.1 Approved School Committee Meeting Minutes for June 7, 2023.
Move to approved school committee meeting minutes of June 7, 2023.
I'll second. Having a motion, second, and voice vote, all favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Ayes have it unanimously. Moving on to 2.2 Approved Special School Committee Meeting Minutes for June 30, 2023.
Move to approved special school committee meeting minutes of June 30, 2023.
I'll second.
Having a motion, second, and voice vote, all favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Ayes have it unanimously. Moving on to 2.3 Public Comment. Public comment will be limited to three minutes per individual and 30 minutes total. There will be no debate or action taken on public comment items. The committee will take items under advisement, or the individual will request an item be placed on a future agenda. The chair will also allow public comment at his discretion during the meeting. Having said that, I now open public comment. Seeing nobody here, I will close public comment. Moving on to 2.4 School Committee Comments and Subcommittee Liaison Reports. Open that up to anybody? Yeah, Kathy?
Okay, so, Policy Revision Subcommittee met on June 16 and June 30. There are six policies that are further down our agenda this evening that were reviewed, and the committee continues to work on Section J. Our next meeting is this Friday, July 21, at 1:00 p.m. via Zoom.
Okay, so J, how many more? How many more after that?
We have six policies in J, and are, we're hoping to bring it to the August 2.
And then that'll be done.
School Committee for the first read, and then we have two more small sections.
Oh, okay, so almost there.
We're almost there.
Yeah?
Yeah.
Okay, anybody else have anything to chime in? Peter?
However.
Oh, yeah, go ahead, Kathy.
However.
There's always the however, but.
If you remember back in March, MASC had done that great big review themselves, so what we decided to do was to move forward with what we have now, and then.
Go back and.
I'll go back through just to make sure when, when I first started looking at it, a lot of it are changes that we've already made.
Okay, so just kind of go back and see what we need to change again. Okay, cool. I have nothing. Andre, I'll turn it over to you. Do you want to do your slide presentation? This is the school committee comments.
Sure. Just, there's a number of things. Let me just get myself ready here. As I've alluded to previously, Barnstable is a large, diverse, and it's a dynamic school district, and so every month, there is much to report in terms of highlights in education. So, to begin with, we want to congratulate the youngest graduates of the Cape Cod Child Development Preschool. These are, and this is going to be a recurring theme about graduation. We've talked about the importance of our preschool for our newest learners, as well as the families that we have in the district, and so they had a graduation. Students, and actually enjoying themselves, some familiar faces. And congratulations, it looks like they had that over at the high school, to all of the graduates, again, of the preschool program. Moving along, Mike, you worked for many years as a first responder, and so the students at Hyannis West Kindergarten visited the Hyannis Fire Department recently, so got a chance to see the equipment, got a chance to see the fire trucks themselves, and they finished the day at the Hyannis Public Library. Students enjoyed a story from Kelly Depin, children's librarian. They got their library card applications, and they also investigated the new playground behind the library funded by Cape Cod Toy Library. So, interactive, students getting to know the community members, and I have to conclude. They also got a chance to make some food, cook up their lunch as a part of this field trip. Moving right along. Still at Hyannis West, Hyannis West does a month-long project where students create culture boxes. Students research and collect artifacts from their country of origin. Students work on them in the school and then take them home to add family artifacts. Some of the cultures represented were the Wampanoag tribe and counties, excuse me, countries such as Brazil, Jamaica, Haiti, Ecuador, Puerto Rico, Colombia, and Mexico. Speaking of the diversity and the talent pool that we have in the district. So, we see parents being involved, student from Jamaica, a family picture, and then community members speaking to the students about, again, some of the local cultures and traditions that we have in the district. Moving over to BUES, fifth graders presented their "Where I'm From" published poetry books to their families at the Poetry and Poetry Event. The fifth grade authors had the famous Cape Cod author Martha Day Zook, apologize for the pronunciation, visit and sign their published books. This was done, will move forward. Students dressed to impress. Ms. Ray and Ms. Batson Heath's superstars participated, and there are the teachers that led this project. This, the scroll forward, holding here, so there was a promise made by Principal Wojcikowski to the students at BUES that if the students, if they met their Read-a-Thon goal, the principal would walk around like a chicken all day, including at the fifth grade carnival. And so, true to form, I'm glad to see that our school leaders are following through on their, their promises to the student body, and so Principal Wojcikowski walked around as a chicken all day, again, in conjunction with the fifth grade carnival. This is the step-up day at BUES. We had students from the intermediate school attend, kind of give them an understanding of what the expectations will be when they move forward. The transitions in our district is something that we've talked about and something we're frankly focused on. Students moving from school to school at the elementary as they move on into the secondary years, and so an important collaboration and connection for our elementary students at the 4-5 building as they prepare themselves to move on to the, to the intermediate school. Okay, I just wanted to, as I, and there's a couple other things, and I want to move forward, I know that we have a meeting to get to, but in terms of what our district is doing year-round, the fuel for the summer, the, the food program that we have in our district, I personally believe is a point of pride. And so, starting on July 5, the Barnstable Food Service Program is offering free breakfast and lunch at five locations for students 18 years of, 18 years old and younger, no ID is required. And so, the locations are Hyannis West Elementary, the Barnstable Community Innovation School, Barnstable Intermediate School, Centerville Elementary, and the Barnstable United Elementary. Breakfast is from 9 to 10, and lunch is from 11 to 12. This is Monday through Friday. I just want to, again, note, as a Barnstable High School graduate, I went from sixth grade forward, and someone that relied on our open gyms, our Barnstable Recreation Programs during school vacations in the summer months, spent a lot of time at the Kennedy Rank, which is now the Hyannis Youth and Community Center, over the summer months, as our, as our students do to this day. This is something that we did not have access to when I was a student here, and so I think making sure that students have access to nourishment through the summer months is, is exceptional and a point of pride in our district. Moving over to the intermediate school, number of things to report, but I know I would, let me, let me move forward. Excuse me, okay. This is the Barnstable Intermediate School, Grade 7 Craigville Teams. They were invited to read poetry from their work at the Fine Arts Work Center in Provincetown. So, a number of students participated, again, the Fine Arts Works, excuse me, Fine Arts Work Center in Provincetown, and this is the students at Barnstable Intermediate School. Also at Barnstable Intermediate School, the UN Global Debate Issues, were 86 students in grades 6 and 7, prepared for their debate teams coming over to the high school, moving over, the debate program. I'm moving backwards, I wanted to note the educators who had retired. This is at the high school, these staff members, and we're going to talk a little bit more about staff members, I'm going to speed this up, I know we've been talking for a time, but our staff members.
Peter and I gave you our time, so you're all set.
Okay, so, a number of things, our staff members that had retired, there was a retirement dinner that was tremendous. I'm not sure if we don't, I'm not sure if I'll be able, I did have a link, we're going to have to pass on this, but one of the things that we did this year, and it may be something that's new in the district, that's also awesome, for lack of a better adjective, is the graduates that attended Barnstable, West Barnstable, went back to Barnstable, West Barnstable to see, you know, you know, where they had began their journey, many of them, and also to connect with the students. And it was Barnstable High School graduates, also some of the students that had choiced out to Sturgis were there, and so that's something, again, new in the district, but I'm hoping will continue going forward. I just think it's a force multiplier, both for the graduates themselves, and then for those young students that are coming up through the ranks. So, that took place at Barnstable, West Barnstable Elementary School. Our graduation was tremendous, we made it through, had it on time, we made it through the wind, so on and forth, and just, so just a couple pictures of our, of our graduates. They were shining brightly, most certainly, on their, their special day. The staff members that were highlighted for their contributions to the students are recognized at the graduation. And again, something that is new in the district, I just wanted to allude to, is each graduate got their picture taken as they walked down the stage individually, so that individual picture, similar to what many colleges do, was, took place, and I thought that was, was tremendous, something that they can have, not just the collective pictures, but you yourself as a graduate, and this is a couple of our graduates that were recognized out front. Two more to go, the end of an era for our graduates, and on my, on to my new dream, on to my new dream as our 2023 students move onward and upward out of Barnstable High School into greener pastures.
As always, excellent. To be honest with you, as I was watching that, I was like, oh, yeah, I forgot to mention that, oh, yeah, I forgot to mention that. Good job, excellent job, as always. Anything, for anybody else? No? Everybody else, do you have anything else to talk about, Andre, other than you're good? Okay, we will move on then to 2.5 Superintendent's Report. Sarah?
Thank you. I have two things, thank you, to share with you and the community this evening. The first is a congratulations to the girls volleyball team. In addition to earning the 2023 USMC AVCA Team Academic Award, the Barnstable High School Girls Volleyball Team has also earned the additional Honor Roll Distinction. This honor roll represents the top 20% of team GPAs in their division. Congratulations to them, and I believe this is the 11th year in a row that the team has received this recognition. So, congratulations. The other item that I wanted to note for the committee and the community is kind of an exciting early extension of our vision of our graduate work. Barnstable High School applied for and received a $100,000 BAR Foundation Grant called Meeting the Moment, and we are now able to announce that as it gets underway. It's a supportive planning grant with partnership with BAR to study the current education context and student need and student experience more deeply, moving towards a vision of excellence for each and every student at BHS. The initial kickoff for this work occurs next week, Tuesday through Thursday, where Tina Crook, who is our math curriculum coordinator, Andrew Vince, who is the social studies and business curriculum coordinator, Jen Perry, the director of teaching and learning 6 through 12, Liz Friedman, and myself will attend a 3J retreat sponsored by the BAR Foundation. This work will set the stage for our implementation of our vision of our graduate and will build off of the successes we are currently experiencing at BHS. We will start with more deeply understanding the student experience from a wide variety of students. Through site visits, professional development, and technical support, we will receive feedback from the BAR Foundation and have an opportunity to learn from other schools in the cohort. So, we're looking forward to this one-year shared leadership experience to be thinking about ways in which we can build upon our successes and make the high school even greater.
Excellent, any questions? Seeing none, I just got two. First of all, for us people that aren't educators, what's the BAR? Who is the BAR?
The BAR Foundation.
Is that big in education, I assume?
It's a big.
So, I'm just ignorant?
It's a big.
Everybody else up here probably knows what it is but me, I get it.
I'm sorry.
I'm the firefighter, I get it, I get it.
Kristen can probably speak to it a little bit, given the.
Is it a national? Is it like a national? Is it a state organization? Is it, do they do, like, do they give?
They're very active in the state.
Okay, is it, do they give, do they give grants for like a bunch of different things, or is it like?
They're actually the group that funded the Mass Ideas Grant.
Okay.
Work, so we've worked with them quite a bit in the past. It's a, at least it was, a private foundation.
Educational foundation that kind of just, they give grants to public schools for all different.
And it is always about re-envisioning, redesigning, reimagining, to really meet students.
Okay, that's, that's enough, that's, you don't have to Google it, I get, I just was just curious, I just, it sounded like everybody probably knew what BARs was but me, so I kind of was like, hmm.
We have had a relationship with them in the district previously.
Okay, and my only other question, kind of concern, is I know we were looking at the vision of the graduate from K through 12, and this sounds like it's, this grant is only for the high school. I would just, obviously, you know what I'm going to say.
Absolutely, yes.
I would just be concerned that it's going to be hyper-focused on the high school for the vision of the graduate, and kids have to go from preschool, as Andre showed, from preschool up to eighth grade in order to get to that point, while those teachers and parents and kids work their tails off to get to the high school, so I just, we don't want to forget them in the vision of the graduate.
Absolutely, we'll not forget them.
Okay.
This just happened to be a very specific high school.
No, and I get it, I get it, I just, I just feel like I have to say that. Okay, no other questions, we'll move on to 2.6 Assistant Superintendent's Report.
Okay, so I have two items for you tonight. So, last week, I was able to attend the Mass, Massachusetts Association of School Superintendent's Executive Institute, it was held in Mashpee, it's held annually. It's a three-day conference, the theme was Students R.R.Y., Leading Diversity, Belonging, Equity, and Inclusion Toward a Healthy and Successful School Community. Day one started with students at the forefront. Patrick Tutwiler, the Massachusetts Secretary of Education, conducted a panel, a panel discussion with student representatives from Project 351. He asked them, you know, what should we be focusing on as educators, and so the insights and thoughts and, more articulate than I am, clearly, that, that they shared around equity, belonging, and education, it is where we need to start, we need to hear our students' voices, which, as you described with the BAR grant, that is exactly, that's the focus. It was a great way to start the institute, set the stage for the rest of the program. Days two and three were highlighted by keynote speakers, Michael Bonner, he's a teacher at the Ron Clark Academy in Atlanta, and Dr. Darnisa Amonte Jackson, who's CEO and founder of DEEP, which is Disruptive Equity Education Project. She works with many districts across Massachusetts to support their work around equity. Both spoke of the importance of belonging and connections, and by understanding students' needs, employing instructional practices that meet the individual needs of students, along with the selection of materials where students can see themselves and provide students with opportunities to better understand the experiences of others. And very clearly, while so many of us are engaging in this work, there's so much more work to be done. In addition to the keynotes, there were over 30 breakout sessions for participants to choose from, all of which supported the message that we're here for our students, our work is to provide all students with learning experiences that they can connect with, and so it was a really, you know, as is, as you find going to these sessions, they're very energizing, but also ground you in the fact that there's a lot of work ahead, but students are at the core, as we always say, but it was really, it was, it was great to attend. Moving on to summer programming, as shared previously, we do have a lot going on this summer. We have the extended school year programming, currently running the district's extended school year services, along with summer tutoring and the summer partner program. We also have the 21st Century Program at Hyannis West Elementary. That runs throughout the year, but there's also a summer component. There are 60 students enrolled in the program, and this summer, again, we're focusing on literacy with a connection to the arts, science, and storytelling and dramatization. We'll also be running the Jump Start Program. I don't know if you remember, we've stepped away from that for a bit between COVID and some challenges with staffing. We're excited to bring this back again to Hyannis West. It's a grant-funded program that provides pre-K students, and I should actually, pre-kindergarten, typically students who have not experienced a pre-K program, so provides them with a jump start to kindergarten. They get an early introduction to the routines of kindergarten, riding the bus, and also some early skills, just to try and give them some solid footing as they enter kindergarten in the fall. Our summer enrichment programs are up and running. As shared at our last meeting, teachers had the opportunity to design and offer summer enrichments for students. The only requirements were that the proposed enrichment should connect with social, emotional, and/or core academic content, and to fall within the weeks of July 10 and August 11, and then the rest was up to them to design. So, this week and last week, we have three sessions running at BWB. Nature Lovers Camp, which is STEM-focused, Summer of Reading Through the Arts, literacy-focused, Summer Fun, which is math, literacy, arts, and STEM. BCIS is running Let's Grow Together, which is literacy and arts applied to their garden with the garden theme, and last week, they had Happy Campers, which is an SEL-focused session through storytelling, art, and team building. And next week, BIS will be running Summer Band, which will extend to BUE the last week of July. And finally, we were notified last week, Friday, at 9:15 p.m., just saying, from Desi, that we had been awarded the Summer Acceleration Academy Grant, so nothing like waiting till the last minute, but we were excited. This will be the third summer that we're running the academy. Given the late notification, we've got a tight turnaround time on this, but we did quite a bit of advanced planning to make sure we were ready to go, under the assumption that we were going to get it. So, invitations went out to families of our grades 2 through 5 students. The literacy program will again focus on our grades 2 and 3 students. Math will focus on our grades 4 and 5. We have registrations that are coming in. Quickly, we already have 60 registrations for the Literacy Academy. I don't have an update on the math yet. The academies are running the week of August 21, which is when we typically run them the week before school starts, which gives, you know, kind of an acceleration and get kids ready to, again, solid footing as they head into the school year. So, I will provide a, more of an update in, for our August meeting, because I should have more information by then. Yeah.
Excellent, go ahead, Kathy.
So, will students in the accelerated program be able to attend both the literacy and the math, or do those times conflict?
So, the times conflict, but they're also geared towards different age groups, so they, so they don't conflict.
Second and third.
So, second and third is literacy.
Oh, okay.
And this is as guided by the, what Desi outlines for us. So, we have an element, an early literacy, and the math is geared towards an older grade, so.
Okay, thanks.
So, they don't have to decide between the two.
Okay. Is that the same, don't we do that during the vacations too? So, is this kind of, because I do remember doing it during the summer, so, and I probably asked the same question last year, so it starts in the, but it's not the same kids families can put in for like, they're all individuals for what they're working on at that time?
Right, it's not necessarily the same kids, it could be, we use our star scores and recommendations from staff for the invitations.
But it's the same thing that we do during vacations, correct?
The only difference in terms of the vacations is that's math-only.
Okay.
So, Desi only puts out funding for math-only in the Vacation Academy.
Okay, and this one's doing early literacy for the beginning of the year?
Yep.
To try to kind of, not catch kids up, but kind of get them, kind of the Head Start type of thing?
Yep.
For the school year? Okay, any other questions? Peter or Andre? No, you guys good? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kristen. Moving on to 3, Old Business 3.1 Authorized Superintendent to Complete Coast Guard ROTC Application. It feels like this has been going on for a while. We finally made it. Do you want to, yes, speak about it?
Yeah, I can give you and the community a bit of an update, but tonight would request that you authorize me with Liz Friedman, the principal, to apply through the JROTC application program for Coast Guard. It has been a little while, it's been last year, June of 2022, that the school committee and community heard a presentation about JROTC programs, and we spent this year doing some background information gathering about the various branches and surveying student interest. At the same time, we've been completing a facilities analysis and capacity assessment. We surveyed the students after the school committee had heard and made a decision mid-year to kind of focus on a Coast Guard branch, and at the end of the year, we had 41 students respond, yes, they were interested in the JROTC program, and 112 students responding maybe, which I feel is strong enough to put an application forward. The information that we got from the Coast Guard was that they are expanding their program and would give us time to build up to 100 students, which is the requirement to have some cost sharing with, with the JROTC. That being said, we certainly may get even more excitement among students and more of a commitment among students over the course of next year, because the application would go in no later than September 15 for implementation the following school year. So, there is still more opportunity for students to learn more and become more knowledgeable, and for staff, especially our guidance counselors, to have more concrete information to share with students about what the JROTC program entails. In terms of the capacity assessment, the committee and the community will hear from our consulting architect at a future meeting related to the capacity of our buildings, based on the enrollment forecast that's going to be shared later this evening, but I did ask him to, you know, kind of briefly summarize for me his take on, on limitations at the high school related to JROTC, knowing that it requires a classroom, an office space, and some storage, and he felt that, given that the high school's enrollment will be decreasing slightly over the next couple of years, and some ideas that he has around, I forget what, what Mike Lambros called it at one point in time, but space mining was what, was what the term was, that the architect didn't have major concerns about space usage. We're actually kind of in a, we're in a sweet spot right now on our space usage at the high school, and this would not tip it over any sort of guidance that he would share. So, I, I think it's a really exciting opportunity. You know, they'll have to evaluate the application. I think the sooner we get it in, the better, because they would then maybe have an opportunity for follow-up questions to strengthen the application, but I, you know, would, would really welcome the committee's support. I think it would be, meet a need both for the region and also for our students.
Excellent, thank you. Any questions? Andre? We got it there, bud.
Yes, and so this is quite encouraging in, in terms of the work that's been done previously, kind of building to this point, and, you know, kind of what I'll say is. And, you know, kind of what I'll say is, I think this year going forward, as there's more of a recognition and an understanding of the possibilities of the program, I, I see the participation in our student surveys increasing. And the idea or the, having another pathway for our students to pursue, I think is, is quite, the, the potential there is, is, is exciting. And then the idea of the hands-on applications, the drill, you know, their participation in the community, the history of the Coast Guard in this region, the history of, you know, maritime service, frankly, in this region. So it's, we, we've worked to this point, which is in and of itself encouraging. There's worked, there's progress ahead, but I'm looking forward to the end of the summer and the fall.
Excellent. Anybody else? I just, thank you. Thank you for kind of getting it to the finish line, or at least to this finish line. It, it, I look at it as just another pathway. It's just, I mean, we're, I'm always about making more pathways, because I'm all about kids trying as many different possibilities, whether it's going to college, going to the military, going to work, whatever it is. The more pathways we can have for our kids in high school, as a dad of four, with college or not going to college or all that, the more pathways you can have. One of my sons did the fire internship, and another daughter did the teacher internship, and it's just, anytime that you can, and it's not just about having them say, yeah, that's what I want to do, as, as a dad and most parents, I mean, there's a lot of parents up here, but it's also what you don't want to do. Because before you stop paying five thousand dollars a course for a college course, you know what, do it for free at our high school, so that you can say, hmm, I don't want to be an engineer, or I do want to be an engineer. I, I just, I'm all about pathways, and I look at, exactly as Andre said, this is another pathway for kids to try. And if they like it, great, and if they don't, before you go down that path, at least you know. So, thank you very much. And Andre, why don't you read the motion? If you don't mind?
I don't mind. Let's see here. Move to authorize superintendent to complete Coast Guard J R O T C application.
Can I get a second?
I'll second.
Having a motion seconded, voice vote, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, nay. Eyes have it unanimously. Moving on. Four point one, new business, four point one, approve Hyannis West, wait a minute, approve Hyannis West School Nurse Appointment.
So we have a successful candidate coming forward, whose name is Megan Crocker. She went through our interview process and is being recommended by Kathy Amato. School nurse appointments by statute are the responsibility of the school committee, and we would request your approval of her appointment.
Can I get a motion?
Move to approve Megan Crocker, School Nurse at Hyannis West Elementary School.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Having a motion seconded, voice vote, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, nay. Eyes have it unanimously. Moving on to four point two, approve Barnstable High School Nurse Appointment.
Similarly, we have a recommendation for Ricky Bilastri to join as School Nurse at Barnstable High School, and ask for your approval.
I move to approve Ricky Bilastri, a School Nurse at Barnstable High School.
Second.
Having a motion seconded, voice vote, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, nay. Eyes have it unanimously. Moving on to four point three, approve instructional technology assistant job description.
This is a position that was newly added in the F Y twenty-four budget to support asset management, particularly at the high school. The job description was crafted by our Director of Instructional Technology, Beth Ann Orr, and reviewed by a number of people in central office, and we would ask for your approval of the job description, so we can post and recruit a candidate.
Can I get a motion, please?
Move to approve the, the instructional technology assistant job description as presented in tonight's materials.
Having a motion, can I get a second?
Second.
Having a motion seconded, voice vote, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, no. Eyes have it unanimously.
Thank you.
Moving on to four point four, create a subcommittee for the purposes of completing the evaluation for the school attorney and review of goals for F Y twenty-three, for twenty-three, twenty-four. So this is, as you guys would remember, last year, we set up goals. We did a subcommittee, and Kathy and I were just on it. As I said to Peter before the meeting, you guys said not it, and Kathy and I were the slowest ones to the trigger. But yeah, so they, so this is for Jane. So we did the goal setup last year with Meg, and then we did the mid-year, and this is the end-of-the-year evaluation. So we're just gonna set up another subcommittee to do the end-of-the-year evaluation and create the goals, like at the same time, create the goals for next year. So the, the, to be honest with you, the motion says, so it's two different ones. First of all, the mo, first motion is to set up the subcommittee, second one is to appoint people. I don't mind being on it again, unless somebody else wants to be on it. I don't, I won't speak for Kathy. Kathy, do you want to be on it again, or are you?
If someone else wants to serve, I can serve.
Okay, just hit the button.
If no one's interested in serving, I can serve. If someone wants to serve, they...
It's up to you guys. I don't, I don't mind doing it.
I think you'll both be great.
Peter, is that a story? Andre, do you wanna?
Kathy, do you want to?
I can, I can continue doing it.
Okay, then.
Okay. So you guys are all set with that? Okay. Kind of, that one kind of makes sense just for the continuity, because we did the goals and we did the mid-year. You know what I mean? It just kind of makes sense for that one. So can I first get the first motion?
Yeah. Move to create a subcommittee for the purpose of completing the evaluation of the school attorney and review goals for twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Having a motion seconded, voice vote, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pass it unanimously. Next one?
I move to appoint Mike Judge, Kathy Benasara-Hurn, as members of the subcommittee.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Having a motion seconded, voice vote, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pass it unanimously. Moving on to four point five, approve school committee policy, section one, instruction. Or is that supposed to be an I?
It's I.
I.
Section I. All right. So section I policies were approved in form on January eleven, twenty twenty-three.
January or June?
January.
January. Oh, okay.
So, since that approval in form, three policies have been revised or created. And so if you remember, we took sections A through H that had previously been approved in form, approved them so that they could be implemented, and all the policies could be up to date for the start of the school year. We needed to go through and make sure that I was complete at the time before we included I, and so that took a little more time. I provided a document that outlined what I'm verbally reporting. Policy A J, I J N D B was the Technology Acceptable Use Policy. It was approved by the committee on June first, twenty twenty-two. I J N D D, Social Media, was created and approved by the school committee on June seven of this year. And I M H, Emotional Support Dogs Policy, was created and approved by the committee on November sixteen. So the remaining policies that are in section I, other than those three, there have been no changes to those. So we're just trying to get everything cleaned up, posted on the website, in the handbooks, and so they're on for action tonight.
Excellent. Any questions? Seeing none, can I get a motion?
Move to approve school committee policies in section I, instruction.
I'll second.
Having a motion seconded, voice vote, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, no. Eyes have it unanimously. Four point six, create policy J J H, student late night or overnight travel for the first read.
Okay. So the following six policies are all first reads for voting at the August school committee meeting, so that they, again, can be in place for the school year. Even though we're working on J, we just are trying to get everything that's really necessary to ensure that it's ready for the start of the school year. Policy J J H, student late night or overnight travel. The changes to this policy are Desi-mandated. Essentially, what happens is the state mandates that between certain hours, which are overnight, that school buses cannot be used, so motor coaches need to be used. So that's what J J H is now clearly stating.
Okay. So this is the first read, so if anybody has any questions or concerns, bring it up to Kathy over the next couple of weeks, and she and Peter could, yeah, could, could address them. Four point seven, create policy J J H R.
Right.
Student travel regulations. Can I just ask one question? So these were already existing?
These were existing.
So it's not, oh, so, so it's creating?
These are creating. These, these were included in a different policy and had been pulled out.
Okay, that's fine. That's, that was just, I just, it just clicked on me. Yep, okay, sounds good.
Okay. Policy J J H R, student travel regulations. The state, again, with specific policies, requires us to have school committee approval of the regulations that ensure that the policy will be implemented correctly. So that's, that's that policy. And these are all in line with Desi mandates.
Okay. So once again, these are all first reads, so if anybody has any concerns about any of these, bring them up to Kathy in the next, or Peter, in the next couple of weeks. Moving on to four point eight, revise policy J J I F, Athletic Concussion Policy.
Right. So the Athletic Concussion Policy had some revisions. You'll see them in there. It's a markup copy. The school physician provided a lot of input and guidance. The athletic trainer had also been consulted, and this is, again, if you have questions or concerns, let me know, and we'll bring them up to the committee.
Okay. Four point nine, revise policy J J I F R, nope, that's the one I just, oh, wait a minute, that was the second one. J J I F R, Athletic Concussion Regulations.
And again, this policy, the state requires that we have our regulations also included in the policy manual.
Four ten, revise policy L B, relations with other schools and school districts, first read.
Right. So policy L B was reviewed in response to a concern that had been brought forth to us via email by a community member regarding one of the non-public schools that is physically located in the town of Barnstable. So the, the, we had policy L B on our books, we reviewed that. There was some language specific to private schools, which has some different policy language from other types of schools that aren't part of our Barnstable Public School System, such as Sturgis, East and West. And so that language was removed, and we used it to create a new policy for non-public schools, so that that information is in a policy and can be clearly referred, to which can be referred when people have questions. So I'll talk about the changes in that with four eleven.
Okay. So brings us to the next one, four eleven, create policy L B C, relations with non-public schools, first read.
Okay. So in general, when a, when a, and a group or an entity decides they want to create a new school, and the school will be located in a specific town, part of the state approval process is that the local school district must review the submitted materials to ensure that the education is going to be of the caliber that we have here as, and that this is all part of the state process. The question that had arisen was that we did that process for one of our non-public schools. They had, they have been operating for a good number of years, like double digits of years. But a parent had a question and thought that we were the appropriate oversight body to look at. So the state says that once we approve a school, we have no further oversight. So the two paragraphs that were in policy L B have been separated, because they are specific to non-public schools, and then we revised the language to make sure that it's perfectly clear what the Barnstable School Committee responsibilities are.
Yeah. So long story short, we kind of collect, we kind of took care of the confusion.
Right.
Broke it off in the two policies, and there's, just made it so it's crystal clear. So there's no more confusion as to where we stand.
Would Peter have anything else to add?
No, that was excellent. Great, great job, Kathy. Yeah, I just had a quick, point of clarification. So does that mean if a, if somebody wants to start a school in the town of Barnstable, we as a school committee have to approve?
Yeah.
Before they can open the new institution?
Yeah. So we actually had a, there was that email, and we actually had a conversation. But so I've been on for, what, eight years? And I was like, I think there's been, we were talking about it, I think there was twice that the school committee had to approve, because I remember one of them, I was like, I was new to the school committee, I was like, why am I approving? Uh, uh, I think it was like a K through two school, maybe? Like, or preschool? I think it might even have been a preschool. I don't even remember what it was. But it was younger, 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 younger kids. And I was like, why are we approving for a preschool to open, or a K through two school? Like, we run the public schools, you know? And they were like, yeah, by the, by Desi, the, the policy is, the school committee has to approve the opening of it. And I remember at the time, I was like, well, have you ever heard of us not? Like, what are we really approving? And they said, the person I talked to actually said, yeah, it does happen. Like, if, if just somebody who's like, just, you know, not an educator is like, oh, yeah, I'm gonna open up a preschool in my basement, and you have to meet all of the asterisks to do it, and if they're like, yeah, I don't know what I'm teaching, I'm just gonna open up a preschool and make some money, you can't do that. And it's up to us to have the oversight to not give that license. We, and if we say no, then it can't happen. There's no, like, you can't go to the state and try to get approval through them. It's, it's, the initial approval is ours. Now, after that, we don't get involved in after that. That's, and that was the confusion. We only get involved in the initial license, and then after that, we're hands-off. It has nothing to do with us anymore.
I, I believe it's part of the process, too. So once, once we approve, it doesn't mean that they can operate either. They have to continue with approval.
There's a whole lot of, but we're one of the checkboxes, but we're a very important checkbox in that process.
Understood. And it is, you know, an important part of what we do, in that, specifically, you know, as you noted, you know, a number of, the importance of childcare, you know? So you have a number of people, you know, that open preschools and want to go, and those preschools, you know, there's no shortage of attendance. But we want to make sure that they are up to the proper regulations, given their importance.
At the start. The key is at the start. And then after that, we don't have the oversight over them after that.
Yes, indeed. But if, if they weren't doing what they need to do to begin with, then I have no problem rejecting, you know, given the importance of particularly early child education.
Yeah, I think in the last eight, eight years, there might have been two. I think there's been two. Yeah, I think there might have been two in the last eight years. So it doesn't happen very often.
It makes sense, because when families choose to go to a different school, and if they're not comfortable with that school anymore, they're going to come back to our local school district. So if they've spent their elementary years in a private elementary school, and they hit us at the intermediate school, they've got to come in at that sixth-grade level. So there has to be some way initially to make sure that there's some oversight academically, since they'll, they'll come back to us if they continue to reside in Barnstable.
Yeah, some oversight and some consistency. You know, meaning, you know, you should be at a, if it's a first or second grade, third grade, you know, it should be, and we see this, we see this a lot in athletics, as athletics expands, and there's more options for, particularly our top athletes. A number of entities will just begin schools, you know, take all these top prospects, and all of a sudden, voila, now, now I have a school. And everybody, well, no, you don't have a school, and, you know, at the end of the day, it ends up working out bad. So it's important that we have this safeguard.
I just want to make it perfectly clear to the public, though, that we don't get involved in looking at people's third-grade academics when they've been open for five years. That isn't our job. Our job is only when they initially go for a license, we say yea and nay at the very beginning. After the, if we say yea, and then they decide not to teach what's on their thing, that's not for us to get involved in. So I just want to make it crystal clear that we're not oversight of all the schools in Barnstable, and if you don't like the way kids are being taught at a certain school, we have zero oversight over that. I just want to make that crystal, crystal clear to people, because I see all of a sudden my phone ringing, saying, hey, Mike, we want X school to be like, I don't agree with their teaching in science. That is not our job. Our job is the public school system in the town of Barnstable, in a public school system only. The only thing we do is at the very, very beginning, when the initial application goes in, we approve that, and after that, it's hands-off on our part. Jane, can I say it anymore plain?
No, I think that's pretty, and, and the idea behind it is that we're looking at the academics that they're offering, so that they match...
Is your button on?
Yeah, I think so.
Yeah, okay.
So that they match or exceed what Barnstable Public Schools offers. So that they match or exceed what Barnstable Public Schools offers. So that's the intent behind it is we're trying to make sure that children being educated in Barnstable are receiving at the very least a public school education. So that's the.
At their initial application process.
Right, and then it goes through other, uh, processes and, and development. But we look at it first and then we pass it on to the next level and we have no other dealings with the running of the schools after that.
Right, okay. Uh, moving on to four point, so any of those, just reach out to Kathy or Peter, if, probably Kathy, if we have any, if we have any changes. Uh, moving on to four twelve, consideration of consulting legal counsel. Sarah?
Thank you. Um, so in your packet is, um, a policy as it relates to legal counsel with respect to the district. We do have an in-house attorney, uh, Jane Moynihan. And, um, for quite a while, I've looked into the history a little bit. Um, we've also had, um, consulting attorney, legal counsel, um, for specific situations and, uh, for their expertise. One of the reflections or observations that I have coming in new to the district is that, um, our outside services, um, actually now cross a couple of different legal firms. Um, and it seems a little bit disjointed and, and kind of fragmented. Uh, and it's been a while, um, since the committee, um, I think has kind of reviewed those consulting legal services. So, um, you know, coming to you tonight, um, with this as an agenda item, um, related to whether or not the committee might want to consider, um, how legal services outside of the district are obtained.
Any questions? Once again, anybody can be on this. It's just, it's the same thing, they just took it from the legal counsel from other, from other legal counsel stuffs. That's why Kathy denied names here. But i- if anybody wants to do it, by all means, it just so happens, that's the way it is. But I don't, if anybody else wants to be on it, you're more than welcome to be. So what it is, is we're just gonna kind of look and see with, um, the way we do, um, I just have happened to be the school committee person on, uh, the one I can think of out of the top of my head is the food services. So we do a subcommittee for that and we have a member from the school committee on that to pick our food services company. So I think it's, I don't know, every three or five years or whatever. So, um, we kinda talked about this and I was like, well, let's put it out, like, I don't wanna go with any specifics, let's put it out as an R F P, which is what you do. We'll see who we get and then we'll kinda go from that. Like, we do everything else for R F Ps. So, um, I just figured, put a subcommittee because why take our time as a school committee to go through the app? Well, we can't, we have to do it in a public meeting, go through all the applications and stuff like that. So we'll set up a subcommittee to look at the R F P, kinda go through that process and then bring a recommendation back to the school committee. That's the same thing, like I said, we do with the food, with the food, um, vendors. So, um, is anybody, have any questions or?
Yeah, um, I, I think I heard Sarah say, uh, the current firm, how, how many years have we had this firm?
We, um, found documentation dating back to two thousand and four.
Okay.
Um, but we don't have a lot of records on that.
All right.
That was only one of the firms. We now have a second firm that does some other stuff. And that is relatively new. That's probably within the last.
Couple of years.
Two or three years, probably, maybe. Yeah, just pre-COVID type of thing, so. So now we kinda always just had one, now we've kinda got two outside.
And why do we have two?
Different specialties. So one was.
Okay, are we looking to have one that can cover?
Honestly, I would look at it very differently. I mean, I think we have to see what each firm can offer because we have so many different things coming up, um, that not necessarily one firm could handle.
But who knows? We have to kind of, that's why you put out the R F P, kinda see who puts in for it and
Look at what they have.
Kinda see what they are. And that's what we do with the, I, I can only explain, I can only, the food one is the one that I'm, and what we do is we put out the R F P, you get in a whole bunch of different places, you take their, they have to put in, um, kinda like that Mike talked about when we did the, uh, portable classrooms, like, like we sit there in a room and we go, like, we go through all of the different proposals and like, which one has, and we have sheets and you fill out what's one, each one's offering. And you, when you do an R F P, you don't get the price. You look at what they're offering and then after you're kinda like, you have to rate them at that point, you rate them just on what they're offering. And then what you do is you go back a second time and then that's when they open up the, the price part of it. And then that's when you look at the, the price side compared to what they were offering and you re-rate them. It's kinda the way it all works.
Yeah, so for me, you know, the idea is, if I have this correct, the theory behind the subcommittee is to streamline.
Yeah.
Firms that we.
Well, yeah, to do the R F P, cause we can't really do it as a whole school committee. So what to do is to kinda run the R F P process, figure out, like I just, like I just explained, like kinda do that whole process and then come back to the school committee and say, okay, this is who we recommend that we go with for an outside counsel.
So.
You know, you know what, does that make sense? Does that answer your question?
Because.
Cause that's kinda, like, a couple of years ago, remember how we changed the food? You guys were both, I remember how we changed the food vendor?
Yes.
Well, there was a whole, I was on a subcommittee for that and we went through exactly as I just explained it. That's the way the process works. I said, all I know is through the food vendors, but, but like you literally go through and you, you get as many proposals as you get, you go through, you rate them and to, to have all school committee members do it, if we have a, if we have a quorum, we can't do that because can't have more than two of us, right? So what I'm thinking is, is kinda like we do with the food, do a streamline. So we do, um, the subcommittee, cause then they can do all of that work and then they can bring back the recommendation to us. And then we can still have a talk about it. I mean, we could say, yeah, know what, like, I don't necessarily like that company, let's go back and put it back, kinda like we did for the schools, uh, for the portable classrooms. It's, it's not, that subcommittee isn't deciding that's who we're going with. We're bringing it back to like they did with, I'm sure Mike and other people did the same thing with the portables, like with Sarah and everybody else. So that's kinda the way it, it works.
And, and Andre, if I could just tell, so the town uses different lawyers than we do. So there's overlap where H R is using, uh, firms. I've dealt with another firm for some M C A D things that they're representing us on. So there are a lot of different moving pieces. It might be easier for one firm or a couple of firms to be our lead people for certain things that we don't handle internally.
And it's just to open up the process. It's not even saying we're gonna change. Cause we may end up at the end of the day, say the firm we have is the best, best. Yeah, it's just kinda looking at it. Cause it hasn't been looked at since two thousand and four.
So close to twenty years.
Yeah.
And, uh, no, that helps me to understand and I, I agree with that logic, you know, in that.
And Sarah being the new superintendent was like, wow, this is kinda, as she said, this is kinda disjointed, so maybe we should look at it and see after twenty years, maybe there's a better way to do it.
Yes, and the, um, a large district, uh, things happen. Uh, and so that, uh, we, you know, have people that have consistently, uh, worked with us on these things over time. I, I think it's advantageous for everybody going through this process rather than, uh, you know, in a large, you know, when we have to address things, uh, and, and hiring somebody you haven't worked with before and doesn't have a familiarity. Um, so that's, was my question and I understand it and I, I would agree with a streamlined and more fluid process.
Okay, sounds good. Can I get the motion for the subcommittee?
Uh, move to create a subcommittee for the purpose of soliciting and reviewing, uh, R F Ps from potential consulting legal firms and make a recommendation of the school committee.
Second.
Having a motion, second. Voice vote, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, nay. I just have it unanimously. Okay, so now, the second part of it is who wants to be on it? I don't mind being on it, uh, again, I, being the chair, I mean, being the chair, I kinda deal with the legal counsel. If you actually read our motion for outside legal counsel, um, outside legal counsel is only supposed to be accessed by either superintendent or the chair of the school committee. No one else is supposed to read it, the outside, I'm not talking about inside, I'm talking about outside. So, I mean, the, the years that we didn't have Jane or we didn't have inside, then it was, everything had to go through either the superintendent or through the chair of the school committee. And even now, if anybody wants to reach out to the ch, to the outside counsel, any of them, it should be either going through the superintendent or the chair of the school committee. So I, I don't mind being on it. And, and Kathy, I won't speak for you, that's up to you.
Well, I'll move to appoint Mike Judge, Kathy Ben, Sarah Herndes, members of the school committee.
Second.
Subcommittee.
I second.
Having a motion, second. Voice vote, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, nay. I just have it unanimously. Okay, moving on to conduct financing facilities business, five point one, population and enrollment forecast. Sarah?
Um, thank you. So I am sharing, uh, with you a high-level summary of the report that was put together by Jerome McKibben and Associates. He is a demographer who has worked with, um, hundreds, I'm sure, of districts all across the country with all sorts of different, um, profiles and populations and demographics. And, um, he has a really, really great reputation, uh, around his work. He, at this point, uh, right now, is unable to travel, um, but, um, you know, certainly if the school committee had, um, technical follow-up questions, I can do some research with him on those. But at this point in time, we did think that it would be helpful to at least lay out, uh, some of the basics of the enrollment forecast as we talk about facilities. And in upcoming meetings, you'll hear the facilities capacity assessment from the architect who used this report in terms of, uh, you know, kinda determining, uh, capacity over the next decade or so. Um, there are a variety of assumptions that, um, Dr. McKibben puts into his analysis. He works off of census data from two thousand and ten. He, he also looked at twenty twenty census data that is available. He, uh, looks at, um, housing and housing trends. He looks at the fertility rate of the local community. He looks at, um, migration out of the district. Uh, so for example, um, people moving out, uh, in various age groups, uh, as well as population changes, uh, of people moving into the district. And, um, then also builds in some assumptions based on things like gasoline prices and mortgages. Um, you know, so there's really, um, far more than, than we could do internally. He, he really is an expert in this field. So in terms of the executive summary, I'll just turn to a couple, um, couple bullet points. The resident total fertility rate for Barnstable District, uh, over the life of the forecast is below replacement level. Um, this is not kinda unusual for, um, Massachusetts where, um, you know, they're, they're looking at, um, fewer children being born than, uh, peop, than, um, than people who are, uh, people who are passing away. Um, and so that is one of the, you know, sort of big takeaways of, of the summary. Uh, most in-migration to the district continues to occur in the zero to nine and twenty-five to forty-four-year-old age groups. Probably not a huge surprise, given, you know, some of the trends that we've been seeing, um, where we are having a, a lot of newcomers, uh, to our schools, uh, enter in our elementary schools. I should also note that one of the data points that he based this off of is, uh, recent five-year trends in our enrollment. Uh, the local eighteen to twenty-four-year-old population continues to leave the district going to college or other urbanized areas. Um, this is the largest segment of the district's outmigration. Um, it will grow steadily over the next ten years is his prediction. Uh, and the second largest outmigration is in the seventy-plus age category. There will be a slowing increase of empty nest households, uh, no children at home and a relatively high number of elderly, elderly housing units turning over, coupled with a steady in-migration of young families accounts for district enrollment increasing after the twenty-seven, twenty-eight year. And, uh, changes in year-to-year enrollment after two thousand and twenty-seven will primarily be to larger cohorts entering and moving through the school system in conjunction with smaller cohorts leaving the system. Big summary, the elementary enrollment is predicted or forecasted to slowly increase over most of the next ten years. Um, the median age of the district's population will increase from forty-seven point one to forty-seven point nine. Even if the district continues to have some amount of annual new housing unit construction over the next ten years, the rate, magnitude and price of existing home sales will become the increasingly dominant factor affecting the amount of population and enrollment change. Total district enrollment is forecasted to decrease by forty students, um, between twenty-two, twenty-three, which is last year, and two thousand and twenty-seven to two thousand and twenty-eight. Um, but after that, the increase is, uh, forecasted to increase by seventy-eight students or one point seven percent for, uh, the remaining five years. Uh, and not contained in the report, but in a follow-up conversation that I had with him, and I'm not sure if the seventy-five percent is in Massachusetts or if it's, um, nationwide. But seventy-five percent of districts will be experiencing enrollment decreases over the next decade. And I just added that because I thought that it would put, what I would say is maybe a relatively flat enrollment over the next decade, to be kind of an anomaly, um, compared to other districts, um, where there are, there's just a lot of, um, there's, there's fewer children in schools. I know that the northeast, um, and the Midwest, in my conversations with him, are particular areas where this is happening to a greater extent than other, other parts of the country. Um, so here are some of the numbers. This is, um, elementary in terms of, um, the forecast and I have it broken down by school as well. Um, but if you look at the red, which was last year, um, we had, at the time of this report, one thousand five hundred and thirty-two students total in K through three. And, um, that's predicted to dip a bit and then, uh, start to increase again, um, by the end of the forecast at fifteen fifty-nine. And, um, B U E grades four, five, uh, seven hundred and thirty-five students last year. That is predicted to increase, uh, because we've been seeing more students come in at the K to three level, um, than previous years. Up to seven hundred, uh, and eighty-seven, uh, in twenty-seven, twenty-eight, but then decreased slightly, uh, after that. I, I'm gonna back up one step. He did not include preschool. Um, preschool is kind of assumed to be somewhat fixed, um, and we're limited by our space. And so preschool is kinda lim, it predicted to, to, um, remain kind of fixed unless we were to make any changes. Um, we do have more, I think, demand for preschool than we can currently accommodate. So that may be something to look at, um, in the future. B I S, uh, last year was six hundred and fifty-one and, um, that is predicted to increase over the next five years, uh, or maybe a little bit more, up to seven seventeen, uh, but then dip down, um, but still be an overall increase by the end of the forecast, uh, decade to six eighty-five. And then the high school, um, I had mentioned this previously when we were talking about J R O T C. Um, and this is not due to anything, um, wildly dramatic. I think we're, we're looking at just smaller groups coming in and we're graduating larger groups, uh, of seniors that are coming in, um, in eighth to ninth grade. So a dip there will alleviate some of our, um, space pressures at the high school, uh, but then it's predict, then it is predicted to increase again to seventeen twenty-one in, uh, the two thousand and thirty-two, two thousand and thirty-three, uh, range. And so total K to twelve, again, this doesn't include pre-K, last year was four thousand six hundred and eighty, uh, and by the, uh, end of the decade, that's being forecasted is four thousand seven hundred and eighteen. The consultant is, um, ha, and has been open to kind of analyzing his work, uh, in, you know, subsequent years. And so we can send him our enrollment this October one and have him do a bit of an analysis and comparison, um, to kinda keep track. What I found, uh, in using him previously is that he's pretty, he, he was pretty accurate, at least in the early, early years of the forecast, um, in Franklin. Variables change, um, if any of those assumptions don't hold, could potentially do another forecast, um, to see how that would, uh, affect enrollment. But the bottom line, I think, is some, some fluctuations here and there, uh, but overall in the district, uh, pretty steady. Getting to the, um, school level, um, I think that's where we see, um, maybe, maybe some things to be paying attention to and this is a little bit of a preview in advance of the capacity assessment. All throughout, B C I S was assumed to remain the same. It's a special, um, program as an innovation school, uh, and so class sizes and, and enrollment was, uh, assumed to remain, uh, the same. Uh, B W B, uh, is an area, um, it's forecast to increase from two sixty-four to two ninety over the next decade. And, um, we're already experiencing some space pressures there. Has not gotten as much, um, attention or concern as High West and B C I S, but we're starting to feel, um, space constraints at B W B. Uh, and, and I'm, I'm interested to see what the architect has to say about that. Again, we referenced space mining, that's something that we wanna do this year. And we have a consultant, um, built into the F Y twenty-four budget to help us make sense of what action steps we might wanna take in the short versus long term. Uh, Centerville is also forecast to increase from two forty-seven to two sixty-two over the next decade. High West has a forecast to decrease slightly and then increase again, uh, after that, over High West has a forecast to decrease slightly and then increase again after that over the next decade. Although, I would point out, Hyannis West has some of the more variable enrollment in terms of people moving out of the district and then coming, people moving into the district. West Villages is forecasted to decrease from 401 to 371 and then increase to 384 for an overall increase across K to three from 1532 to 1559. I would note too, that, and I would expect, that although our enrollment is remaining steady, the similar trend that we've seen in recent history is that we have more and varied needs among our student population, which necessitates the use of space differently and more staff. So, although the forecast is relatively flat, I could reasonably predict that we'll continue to have students with more significant special needs, more English learners, if the trends hold from what we've been seeing. And it's not just us, it's everywhere, trends that we've been seeing in school-age populations. BUE, we talked about BUE, BIS, and BHS already because those numbers were, were in those graphs, and we're more specific, so I'm going to short-change them here. I'm happy to take any questions or comments that you have. I may, for full disclosure, not be able to answer them all, especially if it's very technical on the methodology here. But happy to take any questions and look forward to your comments.
Any questions or comments?
I do.
Yep.
Looking at the population of the high school, that's interesting to me that it would dip down into the 1,600s over some years. This is a school building that held well over 2,000 students. And going back, you know, some years in the, you know, there was a time where Barnstable had to have double sessions because of the amount of students that we had. So, you know, a Barnstable High School with 1,600 students, I think that that, to me, that says we're going to have, you know, if it gets to that number, even though you have more specialized programs for special education, ELL, so on and forth, but that's a rather low number for Barnstable High School, given the size of the building. So, is that going to, I mean, we can repurpose. That's what it seems to me going forward. Now, I know this is a 10-year forecast, and that's some time. But a Barnstable High School with 1,600 students, I look at what's been done. I mean, that would give us some optionality. You know, there's been discussions about the culinary arts program and how that program can grow and what it could include. I look at how the wrestling program has taken space in what used to be classrooms. Those were history classrooms. If I look back in terms of my own journey through the high school. So, not just in terms of some of the incoming programs. I think going forward, we might have some, or we will have some opportunities, to use a term that Mike Lambros used, "space mining", to do some things that are innovative, if our numbers, again, go to 1,600 for a school that, for many years, was well over 2,000.
Anybody else? I would have just, yeah. Once again, I go back to my pathways. We're just going to, we hopefully will have the room. But I also want to caution that this is only kind of half the report because this is the population. There's no, as you were talking about, the ELL population and higher needs and the fact you have to do smaller classrooms and more individualized learning or smaller groups, and it takes more people, more room, all of that. Is there, and I understand we're going to have the one with the space needs. I get that too. Is there any way, is there any report that you can get where you kind of look with, I don't know, the amount of room, like, it takes to educate kids nowadays? Like, you know what I mean? Like, I understand we're going to have space, and maybe that will be the space needs report. I really want to see that because maybe that will, like, but you know what I mean? Like, okay, this is the numbers, but we all say that it's more people to educate in smaller groups, so you need more classrooms. Because we used to have a classroom with 35 kids. Now, you may have three classrooms with 10 because that's how they have to learn. So, is there any way to kind of take the numbers, take the way we educate kids nowadays, and kind of put it together? Do you know what I'm asking? I know it's kind of a noneducational way. It's a dad way, but like, is there a way to do that?
Yeah. The, I'm eager to see the capacity assessment report as well. And the architect isn't solely running the analysis based on numbers, which would be a concern. Like, if they were looking at the MSBA standards for classrooms, that's actually a really, really tight standard for how much square footage is allotted for a student without necessarily taking into consideration some of these other variables. He did spend considerable time with our principals, with central office leadership to talk about students and student services.
Like, I mean, we have this conversation all the time about how numbers are going down, our budget's going up. It's the same conversation I've had for eight years. So, my question is, but like I said, back when I was a kid, you used to have a classroom with 30 kids in it. You don't have a lot of classrooms, you have a lot more classrooms with small groups. You, a teacher in ELL, at High West, you now have five ELL teachers you didn't have when I was a kid. So, those, they don't take out 30 kids at a time. They have to work in small groups. That's just the way they learn the best, and that's what's best for our kids. So, what takes that into account versus, this doesn't take that into account? So, how do we? Get the message out there and just keep banging my head against the wall, saying this is what education is nowadays? Is there some report that it's a third party versus me or you saying this? Is there a third party that would put, to show what really happens in our schools and the way kids nowadays are really educated more? I would guess more kids are educated in small groups than there are kids in 25-kid classrooms. You know what I mean?
I think we'll have to see the assessment, the capacity report that the architect puts together. And if that analysis isn't there, you know, consider.
I'm just, is there an education, in the education world, is there anywhere that puts that all together?
Not that I think.
Well, there's a new business.
But it's the same, you know, it's happening across districts. I think it's happening more at huge年纪here.
Well, because the thing is, is people that, I'm 49 years old, so it's people, me making decisions, who are thinking about it when I was a kid. And education just is not the same as when I was a kid. You didn't have, I was pulled out for the resource room. When I was a kid, you were pulled out for the entire day. I was in the resource room for the entire day. But there was only two, there was probably five of us in a special room. Nowadays, there is no resource room. Kids are pulled out individually, and there's five kids here and five kids there. And it's just, it's just different. It's just completely different. And you have people making decisions now, thinking about it when I was a kid, and most kids just stayed in the normal classroom. There was very few of us that got pulled out. Now, kids are pulled out all the time for extra help, where I was one of five. So, I just think that the people that are making the decisions, it's not about when you were a kid. It's about the way education is done now. And that, I find, very, very frustrating. So, we need to come up with a, somebody that can show what, yeah, can, as a third party. Not people that are sitting here, but people that's a third party, where people, some, we pay some consultant to come in because they'll listen to them and do that. So, okay, I'll get off my soapbox. Thank you.
Mike, just to that point, I think it's a point that's very well-taken in terms of, you know, I teach history. You know, I'm a member of the Barnstable Athletic Hall of Fame. You know, I'm a graduate of the high school. And so, the conversation's back to your point. You know, when we talk about changes, you know, in the district, you know, what sports league we compete in, you know, it's, you know, if you're talking to a Barnstable graduate who graduated in 1988 or 1995 or 2000, the guy did, or 2010, you know? And they're thinking in those terms.
I know that, and I am too.
And I'm thinking in those terms.
I'm not saying that's bad, but we need to educate the way education.
That's what we're saying. Again, for me, I see 1,600 Barnstable High School, and the trend.
Right, it's not.
Yeah, the data is wonderful, and it's helpful and it's clarifying, and I appreciate that. But to your point.
It's not the 1,600 that when you were there, or when I was at my high school or my elementary school.
And then the greater community, back to what you deal with.
Right.
People say, "Numbers are down, budgets are up", you know? And it's not my kid, you know, but we do need these funds in order to make sure that these kids are successful like you were. And I think that conversation, to your point, as you said, would alleviate.
It's just, it's frustrating.
Would be very helpful in the community. I think that's what we're talking about.
Yeah, it's just, and I get it because that's the way we all look at it from when we were kids. And it's just not the same as when I was a kid. It's just elementary school, when I was a kid, like I said, you were, they pulled us all out. They put us in one room. There was 20 of us in one room, and I didn't really get educated that much. And it was just a place to keep me safe. And now, we're actually taking kids and educating them. You know what I mean? So, it's just different. And there's resources that need to be to educate me, you know? And that's what frustrates me, is people just take it back from when they were a kid, and it's just changed. So, that's my whole point. So, thank you.
You're welcome.
Moving on to 5-point, oh, is there anybody else that had any questions or anything? Peter or Kathy? No, you guys are all set. Okay. Moving on to 5.2, approve appropriation for additional cybersecurity infrastructure. Sarah?
So, this is a request to the committee to approve up to $150,000 from School Choice Revolving Fund to support additional cybersecurity infrastructure. We did not build additional cybersecurity infrastructure into the FY24 budget. But based on the attempted cyber attack that occurred in May, the disruption that it caused, I first want to commend our technology department for their rapid response as a result of some really significant efforts that occurred between mid-May and the end of June roughly, and are continuing to this day. I think, you know, disruption was minimized. We have no indication that there was any breach of personal information or data. So, I do really want to give accolades to their responsiveness. The recommendation from the analysis and the review of the situation is to continue with a product that has been in place since the attempted attack. And it does come at an additional cost. And so, the request is for this funding to come from School Choice. We would then look to incorporate it into future operating budgets going forward. We did receive three quotes. We, I did do some calling around of technology directors in other districts to find out that this really kind of is the standard. And now, because cybersecurity is becoming an increasing vulnerability. And we are also looking to put in some different, and have already put in some different policies and practices related to people's behavior and some cybersecurity training as a preventative measure. So, that is the request this evening.
Any questions? Kathy?
So, thank you for bringing this. The, I believe these infrastructure changes for the cybersecurity are in line with good practice. And I do think that we're seeing this across the board, not only in K to 12 districts, but also higher ed to ensure the safety of our systems. So, I do believe it's critical that we remain proactive and put in place what we need. I fully support the funding, rather than having to end up being reactive and then worrying about the consequences of that. So, I fully support this. And based on what I've seen, I've been involved with this at the college level. This number is very reasonable. You know, it's not, it looks like a six-figure number, and we're all concerned about taxpayer dollars, but that is not a high, high number, so.
Okay, anybody else? Peter?
No, I'll make a motion.
Can I just ask one question?
Sure.
Because I know you brought up about the cyber attack. And was there any, I know the answer, but was there any data that was kids' data or personnel data or anything that was gotten to or anything like that?
No, they've looked for that and watched for it. The, you know, kind of service that we brought in place, and they did not report that there was any breach of data.
Okay, so I just want to make that out to the public, that there was a security attempt, but no data of any.
No data out in the public sphere.
Okay, so I just want to make that. And I'll take the motion, Peter.
I move to approve up to $150,000 funded through the School Choice Revolving Fund for the purpose of additional cybersecurity infrastructure.
Second.
Having a motion, second in voice vote, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Eyes have it unanimously. Moving on to 5.3, approve FY24 pay rates for Barnstable daycare and pre-K program at Barnstable High School. Sarah, do you want to talk, or do you want me to just? So, this was from our, this was an agenda item for our executive session for last month. We voted in executive session, and now we just need to vote for it in public. And the, you don't all have the motion up there. So, it's going to be to approve a $3 per hour increase to the Barnstable Public Schools childcare staff FY24. So, for you that don't know what this is, this is at the high school. We have a pre-K daycare for our employees, all district employees from any of our schools. So, this is a pay increase for the folks that take care of our kids, our employees' kids. So, that's what this is about. So, can I get a motion?
Mike, maybe make note that this program is funded through the staff's tuition.
Yeah, that's, so this isn't taxpayer-funded. This is self-funded by what they get from tuition is put back into the program. So, and this will.
And there was money available for this.
Yeah, and with this $3, we're still staying on that. We're not using taxpayers' funding to fund this. It's still going to be self-sufficient. So, can I get a motion?
Sure. I move to provide $3 per hour increase to the Barnstable Public Schools childcare staff for FY24.
Second.
Having a motion, second in voice vote, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Nay. Eyes have it unanimously. 5.4, approve FY24 grants, gifts, and donations. Do we have any? Yes. Chris, do you want to talk about, finance gentleman, do you want to talk about them? Are you all set? They just are, they are what is what we were given? So, can I get a motion? Does anybody have any questions for Chris about them? No? Can I get a motion?
Move to approve fiscal year 24 grants, gifts, and donations as outlined in tonight's materials.
Second.
Having a motion, second in voice vote, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Eyes have it unanimously. Can I get somebody to read the approved accounts payable war, oh, I'm sorry. 5.5, approved accounts payable warrant FY24 warrant three.
Sure. I move to approve accounts payable warrant FY24 warrant number three in the amount of $202,592.11.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Having a motion, seconded, this is a voice vote, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay.
Nay.
Eyes have it, three to one. Moving on to 6.0, executive session. I'm going to read the most, so the executive session. Move to adjourn, move to adjourn to executive session to approve the minutes for June 7, 2023, and June 30, 2023 to discuss strategy and preparation for negotiations with Barnstable Teachers Association to conduct the strategy session in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel and/or contract negotiations with non-union personnel Jen Kruczek and David Bedeau, and to discuss strategy with respect to litigation, and when not to return to open session. Can I get a second?
Second.
Second.
Having a motion, seconded, this is a roll call vote. Peter?
Yes.
Andre?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Chair's a yes, passes unanimously. That will conclude the public portion of our school committee meeting. Thank you, and have a good night.